Salam aleikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. We'll be starting in five minutes, Insha Allah. And maybe earlier. So stay, stay tuned please. We'll be starting the session very soon. Yeah, we start.
Brother, shall we start now or wait a little bit?
Let's start. In the meantime, people are joining. Insha Allah, the time we start, you know, in earnest, they can, can have most of the people, Insha Allah.
Okay. Distinguished participants, dear colleagues, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Was salaatu wa salaam ala nabiina Muhammad wa ala alihi wa shahbihi ajma'in. It gives us a tremendous pleasure today to welcome, to welcome you to this public hearing session on the exposure draft of a UFI Financial Accounting Standard on Participatory Ventures. This event is held in collaboration with the Bahrain Association of Banks and UAE Banks Federation. We would like to thank them for taking the efforts and extending their support in organizing today's public hearing. The public hearing is one of multiple steps in standard development process at AUFI and represent an opportunity for us to interact with and benefit from the knowledge, experience, and wisdom of professional individuals and experts from all corners of the industry on the newly issued exposure drafts. The exposure draft of AUFI FAS on participatory ventures prescribe the principles of accounting and financial reporting for the participatory ventures. Now and without further ado, let me invite to the virtual floor the Director of Professional Standard Development at AUFI, Mr. Mohammed Majd Bakir, who will present the exposure draft and will walk you through its main content while answering time to time your questions in an interactive session. Brother Majd, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Sister Howra. There is a comment, the Madiha says that there is no voice. Can, can we check? Or Madiha, you need to do the adjustment at your end. Make sure that the, the, the sound volume is, is at the right position. Can you please? Before we start. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil 'Alamin. Wa salaatu wa salaam ala sejjidina Muhammadin wa ala alihi wa shahbi ajma'in. I'm sharing now the presentation. We will be walking through this presentation, Insha Allah. Is it, is it visible to everybody before we start? I shared my screen. Howra, is it visible to you? I can't hear you.
Yeah, we can hear.
Okay, is it visible?
Yes.
Okay. This public hearing, as my colleague Howra mentioned, constituted part of the consultation process we conduct with the industry. And it, it is now, to my best knowledge, this is the second leg of a series of public hearings that we hold for newly issued exposure drafts. The second in English and the, I, I assume that we will have up to four public hearings for this particular exposure draft. One would be in Arabic next week. For a total of four public hearings, Insha Allah. So we, earlier in the year, we held one public hearing for this exposure draft. And this would be the second. As, as we used to say all the time, that we need to go through the, the exposure draft for two main purposes. The, the first is to do or make any, any proposed changes to the text of the exposure draft in terms of certain conceptual matters and certain suggestions, as you may find the proper. And second, in terms of any, you know, writing styles issues, editing whatsoever. So we are open to both, you know, scenarios, if, if, for your feedback on that. That would be our, our pleasure to collect your views and comments. And we will make sure that these comments, Insha Allah, will be taken to the working group, respective working group on the, on the standard. And later on to the accounting board, AUFI Accounting Board, for final approval and for issuance of the final standards, Insha Allah, this year. This is, you know, a standard phrase we put at the beginning of every standard. A UFI Financial Accounting Standard Number Participatory Ventures is set out in paragraphs from one to seventy-six. All the paragraphs have equal authority and the standard should be read in the context of its objective and financial and the conceptual framework for financial reporting as endorsed by AUFI. All AUFI Financial Accounting Standards shall be read in conjunction with the definitions, Sharia principles and rules, and key considerations provided by AUFI, Sharia standards in respect of such products and matters. This standard in particular shall be read in line with Sharia Standard twelve, Sharika or Masharaka and Modern Corporations, and Sharia Standard thirteen on Mudarba. Preface. So, so now we are going through the components of the standard one by one. Preface, PR one, Mudarba and Masharaka are perceived to be the most common forms of Sharia compliant participatory or profit or loss sharing or taking structures. As, as, PR two, as the Islamic finance industry has grown in terms of size, products, and structures, and forms of Masharaka and Mudarba, there was a need to review existing standards, namely FAS three, Mudarba Financing, and FAS four, Masharaka Financing, and to align the same standards with the new conceptual framework. And FAS one, general presentation disclosures in the financial statements. And this standard, as all of you know, that this, this is considered the, you know, building block for our standard development process in addition to the framework, which defines the broader, you know, policy that the board undertakes for development of these standards. This forms part of the comprehensive project undertaken by AUFI Accounting Board for review and revision of financial accounting standards issued earlier, particularly those standards that need, it was decided that they need, you know, a revisit and at times a full, you know, a review or revision, depending on the, you know, industry feedback and depending on the interaction with multiple stakeholders for that purpose. PR three, furthermore, the previously issued standards did not address counterparty accounting for these structures. So the, the board, you know, we will come into that in the rationale for sure. So the board in its project, comprehensive project evaluated the need for this revisit and whether to go through a limited revision or a full, you know, review. And then it decided that both FAS three and FAS four need, you know, a full revision, as, as we call it. And then the, the new standard, you know, it was decided to put all these two, you know, different types of treatments for different products under one standard, as was decided by the respective working group and the board. PR four, this standard brings accounting and financial reporting for participatory ventures in line with global best practices, particularly in relation to joint ventures. Participatory ventures particularly have unique characteristics and are distinguished from conventional joint ventures in terms of structures, classification, and reporting requirements. Once issued, this standard will supersede the existing FAS three, Mudarba Financing, and FAS four, Masharaka Financing, as we will, you know, present later on. Introduction. Any, any questions so far? Any, any, any comment? Any, any suggestion, any proposal on that, on that text or on the drafting of the exposure draft? Anybody who needs to, wants to, you know, drop a comment or share a comment, please do that through the comment box. We have a chat box. Please do that. And if needed, we will also open the floor for those, you know, stakeholders who want to, you know, address, address us live, address the, the audience, and provide their comments. Overview. IN one. This standard prescribes accounting and financial reporting principles for recognition, measurement, presentation, and disclosures to apply in relation to participatory ventures, including most of the common structures and products based on Mudarba and Masharaka. IN two, this standard shall be applied in respect of accounting and financial reporting by the investors, investor investors, depending on the case, the working partner or partners, as well as the participatory ventures with regard to such, all such participatory ventures that fall within the scope of this standard, including those with fixed and variable equity or quasi-equity shares. So the, these three, three areas are the, the key, you know, areas that are covered by the standard and which, as we mentioned, distinguish, you know, this new standard from old, old standards that have been there for, for, you know, a couple of decades. We move on. Rational for issuing this standard, as we will see here. IN three, in line with the new strategy of the board, AUFI initiated the review and revision project, as we mentioned, in twenty eighteen to review and revise all existing FASs that needed such a review. And as part of the process, any view of the feedback received from market participants, it was decided, considered imperative to perform a comprehensive revision of the existing AUFI FASs on Mudarba and Masharaka in addition to the proposed provision or revision, sorry, of FAS twenty-seven investment accounts. Because both, you know, these, these standards involve a bit of, you know, commonalities, particularly the, the use of participatory structures. Any questions so far? We continue the rationale for issuing this standard. A revision of the, in IN four, a revision of these standards was considered pertinent because the same had been issued quite a long time back. And since then, there have been significant developments in the structure and applications of the products based on Masharaka and Mudarba, as well as in the financial reporting standards applied to similar structure, transactional structures across the industry globally. Furthermore, and it, as, and as a result of the finalization and issuance of AUFI comprehensive, I mean, the conceptual framework for financial reporting and FAS one, it was inevitable to ensure that the earlier, all the earlier issued FASs are also aligned with the new pronouncements. Particularly certain accounting treatments prescribed by the earlier FASs were not considered aligned with the revised AUFI framework and generally accepted accounting principles. Wherever, you know, there is, you know, compliance with Sharia, and hence their alignment was, with the same was considered by the board very much, you know, necessary. Significant changes from previous standards. This is standard, the new standard, accounting and financial reporting for participatory ventures, introduces significant improvements to its predecessor standards, namely FAS three and FAS four, inter alia in the following aspects. The existing standards did not cover the cases of participatory ventures in the books of account of the working partners and the participatory venture itself. So this is, you know, one of the key new additions that now AUFI accounting standards cover both sides of the balance sheet and that, and, you know, in certain situations, that the venture itself, the, the, the project itself, that, you know, involves both sides together. B, the existing standards were not aligned with the new conceptual framework and generally accepted accounting principles in many aspects, including issues like establishment of control, quasi-equity accounting, and off-balance-sheet accounting. All these aspects were not introduced into the newly, you know, reviewed pronouncements, particularly the framework and FAS one. And the, the board felt it is, you know, it was quite necessary to realign the, the, the issued standard, the, the standard the issue at the time with these new pronouncements. Any questions so far? Any suggestion? Any, you know, comment on the text, on the drafting? Here's a team, if you can take their, you know, anybody's comment. We continue with the significant changes from previous standards. C, the specific cases of participatory venture with gradual transfer of ownership or transfer of units such as variable equity ventures, particularly running Masharaka, diminishing Masharaka, and restricted Mudarba were not covered under the existing previous issued standards. And D, the existing standards, as you know, similar to other certain earlier FASs issued by AUFI, included certain Sharia related requirements in the body text. You, yeah, as a practice, it, it used to be compiled at the end of every standard in the form of basis of conclusions. But those basis of conclusions related mainly to Sharia, permissibilities and impermissibilities and issues, you know, that fall within the domain of, of, of Sharia, as well as, you know, in, in certain, you know, respective appendices in line with other newer AUFI FASs. Such requirements have been removed and standard refers to and shall be read in conjunction with respective AUFI Sharia standards, as is now the, the common practice, the starting point for the development of our standards. As we mentioned at the beginning, we start with the framework, FAS one, and the respective Sharia standards. Those are the underpinnings of the, you know, development or review process, you know, to go with. Any questions so far? This is for the rationale. Now, objective of the standard.
Brother, there is one question in the chat.
Yes, please, if you can read it out.
It's from Mr. Deeg. Which stakeholders are responsible of updating of significant changes to our Islamic finance governing bodies?
Actually, this, you know, the, the, the matter of who's responsible is, you know, varies actually from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. As at the level of AUFI, we update the standards, we issue the standards, and we share with the industry. In countries where adoption is mandatory, for sure, the, the, the central banks, the regulatory authorities will make sure that once these standards are issued will be, you know, taken into the market. And in certain situations, these standards are subject to effective dates. In specific situations, AUFI encourages, you know, earlier adoption. So these can happen at different levels. We, we are flexible to, for, for, for this kind of, you know, a new adoption. But at the same time, it is up to the regulatory bodies also to decide such, such matters. And at that time, they have to start adopting these standards. And in certain situations, it is left for the institution itself in, in case of, in case of, you know, where AUFI encourages early adoption. Institutions, to my best knowledge, particularly in, in countries where adoption is mandatory, even before effective date comes into, you know, full swing, the, the certain financial institutions decide to adopt these standards because they feel these standards, you know, are in their best, you know, interest in terms of, you know, accounting for the proper financial reporting, accounting for certain products, which particularly in the case where such treatments and such, you know, requirements have not been covered in, in the past. This is, you know, my, my answer to your question. Any other question? Do you have another question? We proceed, okay. So i- i- in short, the objective of this standard is to prescribe the principles of accounting and financial reporting for participatory ventures. Again, participatory ventures is a broad term that, that can be established on, as identified by the board, on two main modes of investing. Now we call them investing on the balance sheet, on the, on the asset side of the balance sheet. All the standard used to call the same financing. Now it is, you know, that the board changed its strategy and its, you know, approach. And now we, we specifically, you know, focus on that the main objective of the, the product itself, whether it is that the main objective of the, the product itself, whether it is financing or investing, in this particular situation, mudaraba and musharaka, when on the, when on the asset side of the balance sheet, they are, uh, considered, uh, you know, investing. Uh, we move on, uh, scope of the standard, uh, this is, this is, uh, again, this is a uniform, uh, structure of the standard. We are following the same, uh, you know, uh, the same sequence of, uh, components of the standard. Scope now, uh, scope, this standard shall apply to all participatory ventures, uh, as defined in, uh, paragraph four D, except for the exclusions, uh, those, you know, areas scoped out, provided in paragraph, uh, three, in respect of accounting and financial reporting by the investor or investors. Uh, wherever we put, uh, S in brackets, it means that we may have the situation of one investor, uh, uh, multiple working partners or one, or multiple investors, multiple, uh, working partners or, uh, multiple investors, one, single, uh, working partner and so far. So that, that's the purpose, if you've come across these, you know, S's in the, in brackets, it means that we have, we are covering these two different, you know, various scenarios in, in, in this standard, as well as the participatory venture itself. Uh, the standard shall not apply to the following, this is a scoping out paragraph, this is very important for every, you know, adopter of the standards to see where the standard, you know, fits and where, uh, a, a stakeholder can apply the standard and where it cannot. Uh, A, investment accounts and similar participatory instruments issued by Islamic banks and similar financial institutions, uh, which are subject to the requirements of relevant A U F I facets. So for, for investment accounts, it's a different structure, different, you know, uh, setup, so, uh, these are not covered here. Other similar participatory instruments, particularly participatory instruments that constitute a specific kind of relationship between the, the issuer bank and the holders of the, the certificates. This is again, is not within the scope of this standard. Uh, B, investment agency, Al Wakala Bil Asti Smart, which is subject to requirements of respective A U F I fast, uh, which is fast thirty one on Wakala. Uh, C, co-owned assets, uh, based on, uh, Shirkat Al Malk. Uh, as such assets do not constitute participatory ventures, uh, because by definition, participatory ventures depending, depends on the, you know, in, in, in intentions of the party and, uh, you know, the approach the party take to, uh, willingly establish, uh, a venture, but in the case of Shirkat Al Malk, that this intention is, is, is not there because, uh, the, 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 the formation of the, 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 the partnership or the venture, so to speak, uh, comes through, uh, different, you know, mechanisms, uh, which is, you know, joint, joint ownership of, uh, certain assets, as in the case of inheritance, for example. So these are, uh, uh, scoped out of this standard. Uh, D, participants' investment funds and other similar participatory instruments issued by Takafal institutions to the, uh, Takafal participants, uh, uh, which are subject to requirements of Takafal standards. This is again, you know, out of, of the scope of this, uh, standard because, uh, treatments for such products are, you know, specific and takes into account the accounting requirements for that particular arrangement, which is Takafal, which is, you know, uh, that requires a unique, uh, set of, uh, you know, requirements, accounting requirements, so we, uh, we, uh, refer to the, uh, respective standards in such situations. Any questions so far? Even, you know, our, uh, valued participants can, uh, can take permission from the team to, uh, speak up, to provide their comments live. We also welcome, uh, this kind of, uh, you know, live interaction. Uh, then, uh, investment accounts, uh, of, of investment structures in the form of a, a legal entity, uh, for example, those including issuance of shared capital by the working partners, this is, uh, out of scope. Investment in Sukuk, shares and other similar, uh, instruments which are subject to accounting in line with the requirements of the relevant A U F I facets, uh, except for Sukuk based on participatory ventures to the extent of underlying product or asset, uh, accounting as referred back to, uh, you know, this is standard. Uh, and then investment funds, entities having the status of a legal entity which are subject to financial reporting in line with requirements of the respective, uh, A U F I fast. And then we have investments in corporate entities having parent subsidiary, associate or joint venture relationships or investment through trusts which shall be accounted for in line with the requirements of, uh, relevant fast. This is for, uh, you know, the, uh, scope and scope out. Is there any questions so far before we move to definitions?
Uh, yes, brother, there are three questions. Uh, first ques- question is from Mister Deek. Uh, thank you for your answer. Also, who is responsible of updating our embassies in host country?
Actually, actually, it's not, it's not, we don't have anything to do with embassies. Actually, we treat directly with central banks or regulators in your respective countries. So, uh, those, uh, in, in, in those countries that adopt our standards, uh, on a mandatory basis, once the standards are issued, we, uh, share these standards, the, the, the soft copy version of the standard immediately. Uh, be, before we, you know, uh, before we actually print, uh, print the, the physical, the figured version of the standards, we share the software, uh, soft conversion, I'm sorry, uh, in a PDF format and this is for their convenience where regulatory bodies can uh, at their level, uh, share, reshare with the, with the industry in their jurisdiction. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, they can, uh, you know, uh, the, depending on the effective date of the standard, they can in certain, in ma- ma- in, in most of the situations, the, 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 the regulatory bodies also follow the same measures followed by A U F I that we, uh, uh, either we leave it for the effective date to become, you know, in, 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 in effect, or for the, uh, individual institutions to, uh, start early adoptions in, in certain cases. But we don't have any, anything to do with, uh, these diplomatic missions in countries, um, where, you know, uh, and here in Bahrain or in, in other, uh, you know, uh, parts of the world, this is, uh, uh, this is out of, you know, out of question because, uh, uh, our, our work focuses mainly on the banking and finance and other, you know, uh, areas, uh, relevant areas, uh, in our work. So, uh, we deal directly with regulatory bodies and with financial institutions, but not with diplomatic missions.
Uh, thank you, brother. Uh, there is another question from Mister Awais. Uh, what is the reason for exclusion of banks?
We didn't exclude banks. Did we, did we exclude banks? Uh, I didn't say that. We excluded certain, certain structures. For example, uh, investment accounts for banks on the liability side, yes, this is excluded, but we are not, we don't mean that we are excluding banks. We are excluding certain structures, uh, you know, within the business model of the bank because those structures are subject to, uh, different, you know, requirements and they are not fall here, technically, they don't, don't fall within the, uh, scope of this standard. Any other question?
Thank you, brother. There is another question from Mister Sayed M Tiaz Abbas. Why is participatory venture definition not included in the chapter of definitions?
Actually, uh, it is there, uh, we, uh, we will provide this, we will come into that participatory venture. It is because, you know, uh, we have the structure, we are defining the structure, it is, it is well-defined in, uh, control of assets and business. This is the broad, uh, broader structure and within this structure, we, uh, will come into, uh, participatory ventures. Yeah. Any other question?
Uh, no more questions.
Okay, so in terms of the definitions, we will, uh, you know, try to take your questions, uh, one by one over time, Insha Allah. Uh, but let's, uh, now finish, uh, certain sections within the standard or in, in one go. Uh, control, uh, it is defined in, uh, now it's a standard, uh, control of, uh, the deter- determination of control of assets and business, it is, it is defined there. And also it is defined in fast one and, uh, and, uh, framework. But for practical reasons, it was decided that we take the concept of control in one central standard and we cover it, you know, at length, uh, to account for the different cases and different scenarios. Uh, mudaraba, as is defined in, uh, A U F I conceptual framework, most of the, of the, you know, basic definitions, you you'll come across this in the conceptual framework and in, uh, certain situations in, uh, fast one also. Musharaka, in the specific context of this standard, is a partnership, uh, musharaka based on Shirkatul Act, whereby two or more parties agree to combine their assets, labor, entrepreneurship, financial commitments and/or goodwill for the purpose of making profit. So as you can see that the concept of musharaka is mainly derived from the, the, the Sharia concept of musharaka, but here we also pay in certain, you know, cases, we provide our own, um, uh, definition to cover that, that the main aspects that would be, you know, tackled by, by, by certain standards, so in all, all in all, these, these definitions are also in line with Sharia, but with the, with different, you know, flavor. Because here we are talking about, uh, accounting and certain aspects within the process of accounting, so we need to come up with our own definitions to be, you know, clearer on certain aspects of, uh, these modes and contracts. Uh, participatory venture, as I mentioned, is also defined in, uh, the standard on, uh, control, uh, control, determination of control of asset and business. Uh, Sharia compliant participatory venture, this is what our brother meant, uh, this is, uh, uh, the board decided to add Sharia compliant participatory venture to the uh, to the term, uh, as a term, but not to the name of the standard, uh, here, just to be, uh, much clearer about that, Sharia compliant participatory ventures, S C P V, uh, it is defined as a business venture, uh, uh, formed or constituted on the basis of a Sharia compliant participatory structure, so the structure, as I mentioned earlier, it is the, you know, a broader, broader, broader sphere. Uh, within that, you have the ventures being a, a then, a virtual entity, but not a legal entity. As we mentioned in the, in the scope and the rationale, including musharaka and mudaraba or any similar structure creating a Sharia compliant partnership irrespective of the name or nomenclature. Uh, so why we are talking about virtual entity, not legal entity? Because once we have a legal entity, it is, it is, you know, out of scope because uh, this takes us to a different level, uh, uh, like an entity, uh, established through a license, uh, to carry out or conduct this kind of, uh, of, uh, you know, uh, products or transactions. Here, one, uh, w- w- the, the standard covers that aspect that relates to the work of institutions where institutions established within the, you know, within the structure of the institution, virtual entities to, to, you know, uh, handle these kind of transactions. Uh, is, is, uh, definition clear for our brothers and sisters? Sharia compliant participatory venture, this is just, you know, in a nutshell, uh, we, we try here to give the, 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 the notion of the, of the, of the term from an accounting perspective and also taking into account the requirements of Sharia. Uh, variable, uh, equity participatory ventures, uh, is a type of participatory venture in which the respective amount of, uh, quasi-equity contributed by investor, investors, as well as a working, working partner remains variable through, uh, ongoing dr- drawdowns and redemptions by the working partner on a very frequent basis. Uh, normally subject to a maximum limit of such quasi-equity contributed by, uh, the investors. Uh, here, the standard explains the most common form of variable equity participatory ventures is running musharaka. As many of you are aware, running musharaka is now a product practiced or offered in certain jurisdictions, uh, which also, you know, uh, is operated under, uh, Sharia principles and rules and, uh, the, the, the decisions or fatwas, you know, issued by Sharia supervisory boards in certain countries. Uh, although certain other musharaka-based and mudaraba-based products and instruments may be, may also clarify, clarify, uh, classify as such. This is for the variable equity, uh, equity participatory venture, uh, which has, you know, uh, other subcategories that are also covered within the scope of this standard. Uh, any questions or we proceed? Working partner. He's a partner. No questions, okay. Is a partner in a participatory venture principally entitled to manage and/or operate such uh, participatory venture and who receives equity contributions from the investor, investors? Working, uh, the working partner at times may also commingle its own equity in the, uh, participatory venture, uh, explanation. A working partner, depending on the nature of the underlying contract, may generally include a, a mudarab or a musharaka's working partner. So, the working partner is a broad term that covers, in the case of musharaka, the working partner, in the case of mudaraba, the mudarab because the mudarab assumes the role of, uh, you know, uh, working partner because by, by mandate, the mudarab is, must be enabled to, uh, play a, a, a wo- working partner role uh, as to the, uh, uh, mudaraba, uh, transaction. Because of, you know, a mudarab, as, as, as we know, in, in, in Sharia, in Sharia terms, mudarab uh, must be, you know, empowered to, uh, handle certain tasks without any restrictions from the Rabbul Ma'ad. So in, in this situation, mudarab himself becomes very much similar to the, you know, working partner, uh, you know, feature. Any other, any other, any questions or we move on? So the, now, we are done with the, uh, the basic components of the standard, every standard, we, we have the same components. Now we move on to the, uh, the, the body of the standard where we, uh, the standard provide the, uh, the accounting and the financial reporting, uh, uh, requirements for the certain scenarios as we come, uh, into that, Insha Allah. We have here under this standard many scenarios where where are, you know, determined or defined by the, uh, relationship between the, the, the respective parties involved in the, in the transaction or in the process. So assessment of extent of control by investors and the working partner, because this is, this is the a starting point to determine the relationship between the, to, uh, uh, two counterparties. And based on that, the, the rights and obligations of every, uh, party to the transaction will also be uh, defined and, uh, accounting will ensue depending on the nature of the, uh, relationship between these different, uh, counterparties. Uh, now, uh, by, uh, controlled by the investor, uh, or the working partner, uh, accounting and financial reporting approach suitable for a participatory venture shall be assessed by determining the extent of control by the investor and the working partner on the participatory venture, as I mentioned, uh, the extent of control over a venture and the, the assets underlying the venture, where applicable, shall be assessed in line with the definition of control as we uh, refer to in the respective, uh, fastest fast, uh, uh, you know, standard, which is, uh, which has been issued, uh, under, uh, fast, under the number of fast, uh, forty six. Uh, assessment of, uh, of extent of control by the investor, we continue the, the same paragraph seven. Uh, an assessment of the ex- the extent of control in line with the requirements of paragraph five, uh, above shall result in one of the following conclusions. So we, uh, we have these different, you know, uh, uh, conclusions that depend on the proper assessment of the element of control. A, participatory venture is controlled by the investor or investors, this is one. We will cover that in, uh, in the respective places within the standard. B, the participatory venture is controlled by the working partner or partners, also we have, uh, uh, certain section for that and then uh, C, the participatory venture is under shared control of the investors and the working partners and in which case uh, accounting treatment will be, uh, tackled under, you know, or in its respective section within the standards. We, we have these three, uh, different scenarios. Uh, every scenario, as I mentioned, will, uh, dictate the accounting treatment that we follow. Uh, summary of accounting approaches, uh, applicable to investor and the working partner, so here the, the table, uh, this is, uh, uh, this is part of the standard, the table is part, uh, of the standard, in the body of the standard. The following table summarizes accounting approaches applicable to the investor and the working partner in different situations related to the control of participatory ventures in line with the requirements of the, uh, paragraphs to come from nine to thirty one. So if the, if the, uh, controlling party is the investor, investor or investors who control the participatory venture, so we refer to, uh, paragraphs from nine A to thirty one A. The accounting treatment in this, uh, particular situation will be e- either pass-through accounting approach or in certain situations, a net investment participatory venture accounting approach. If pass-through approach is impracticable, as we will come into that, and we will also come into the concepts of these. Different approaches and the different, you know, relationships that are entailed for every, uh, for, or within every, uh. Approach or accounting treatments. Uh, the, for, for now, we start with the accounting treatment by the investor on the other side that. Because the standard, as we mentioned, the standard covers both sides of every transaction. So on the, on the other side, the counterparty also, uh, has its own, uh. Uh, accounting treatment in which situation is the off-balance-sheet accounting approach. Okay, because, uh, when, when, when control is established for the investor, what we expect in this situation that for the counterparty. Uh, because of lack of control, it, it will come under the off-balance-sheet accounting approach. Which goes without saying because of the, you know, lack of control for that counterparty. So for every, for every, uh, every scenario, as you will see, there is, you know. Uh, proper justification why we are, uh, having these different kinds of treatments on, on both sides. Uh, you know, because of, you know, the practicality of the, uh, uh. Situation where or the relationship between the, the two, the two parts and which. Entails different treatments, uh, to, to do with. Uh, counter, uh, here, and B, the controlling, uh, if, if it is decided that the controlling, uh, party is the working partner. Uh, the, uh, controlling that participatory venture, we mean all the time that control over the participatory venture. Again, we are referring to nine B to thirteen B. Uh, accounting treatment will be, uh, also here, the, at this third option. Will be net investment in participatory venture accounting approach. On the opposite side, uh, the counterparty side. It will be quasi-equity accounting approach. Uh, C, uh, investors and working partner have shared control. Over the participatory venture in the books of the investor, it's net investment in participatory venture accounting, uh, approach. And the same for the, uh, counterparty, also net investment. So, so as, as you can see, the different scenarios entail different treatments. But this, all these treatments are, are logical in terms of, you know, uh, the practicality, in terms of, uh, application. Uh. And under these, under every scenario, we will come into the, uh, proper full set of accounting treatment. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, starting from initial recognition, uh, measurement and, you know. Uh, disclosure, et cetera. Any questions so far? Any question? Just think of the table as, you know, a summary of the different scenarios we, where we will be covering under this standard. If the, if the controlling party, he, uh, is a perpetual participatory venture. Accounting treatment on the investor's side would be, would follow the net investment participatory venture accounting approach. And on the counterparty's side, accounting as equity. While following quasi-equity accounting approach as far as practicable. In, uh, scenario E, participatory ventures involve, uh, involving gradual transfer of ownership, which. Was earlier defined, the situation where we have this kind of setup, uh. Gradual transfer of ownership, uh, through units, through, uh, you know, in, increasing, decreasing shares of the respective parties. Uh, in the books of the investor, the net investment, uh, in participatory venture accounting approach. If pass-through is impracticable, we will come into that. And on the counterparty side, the quasi-equity accounting approach. Any questions so far? For, for all these scenarios, we will, uh, Insha Allah, we will have, uh, each covered in its own respective place within the standard. Uh, NF, variable equity participatory venture, uh, we are referring here to, uh. Uh, paragraph fifty-nine, as you will see, and for the accounting in the, in the books of the investor. Uh, the, the, the preferred method to be followed here is net investment in participatory venture accounting approach. And for the counterparty on the other side, uh, the preferred approach would be quasi-equity accounting approach. This is, this is a summary of the different scenarios, different situations. Now we will. Dig deeper into that, we will see that in detail and, uh. We will follow the, the accounting treatment that, that I mentioned. Accounting and financial reporting in the books of account of the investor. Now, if the investor has control, as we mentioned. An investor shall apply either of the following approaches for accounting and financial reporting of his investment interest in a participatory venture. In case of participatory venture is controlled by the investor, only the pass-through accounting approach as prescribed in ten to twenty. And let's consider impracticable. What do you mean by impracticable in these cases? Impracticability may arise from different elements, including. Uh, including the, the, the cost-effective, you know, uh, a- aspect of the, of the practice. Uh, in certain situations, uh, if we apply certain approaches that might not be, uh, much. Uh, cost-effective and may not justify the, 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 the cost associated with, uh. Financial reporting for that particular situation. So depending on, as, as you know, accounting, you know, focuses on, uh, an approach or the notion of significance. Significance, if, if, uh, any transaction or any, um, amount or any, you know, product. Uh, or any, uh, item in the, on the, on the balance sheet. That, that have significant, you know, uh, uh, impact on the, on the reporting. Or as part of the reporting, it would be, it would be part of the, you know, financial reporting. Otherwise. For these insignificant items, as in certain situations, we, uh, we, you know, follow the. That the principle of clapping, uh, reporting under, uh. Uh, one, you know, a line item, et cetera. So depending on, 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 uh. Significance of items, uh, uh, this is in line with the basic accounting actually. Uh, so this can be, uh, a, a determining factor for which approach, uh. Uh, the investor will follow, particularly if, if pass-through is not, uh, is not, uh, that much, you know, feasible. So, uh, the standard also give way to, uh, other treatments. In B, in, in all other cases, including the case where the participatory venture is controlled by either the working partner. Or is under shared control of the investors and the working partner, the net investment in participatory venture accounting approach. As prescribed in paragraph, uh, paragraphs twenty-one to thirty shall be followed. Uh, so, uh, as you can see, this is, again, this is, uh, accounting logic. Where, uh, where there is shared control, where is, uh, control is not in, in, in the hands of, of, uh, one party. Uh, the net investment, uh, where each respective party. Only reports its, its net interest or net investments in the participatory ventures, bid the. Uh, aggregate of all these investment, uh, and net investments in the participatory venture, making the. The full value of the, uh, participatory venture, uh, if, if we are looking at, you know, aggregates. But, uh, individually, every party has to, every, uh, uh, investor or every counterparty has to. Uh, show that, uh, respectively, uh, in their own accounts based on the net investment or net interest for each. Any questions so far? No questions? Okay, uh, we continue. Uh, we are starting with a pass-through, uh, accounting approach. Initial recognition, on initial, initial recognition.
There is one question, uh, from Mr. Deeg. Uh, does this investor accounting apply to grant funding, microfinancing and any other small amounts for business activities? And employee lifestyles and rewards for employees for loyalty?
No, actually, this is out of scope, as I mentioned, here, because we have, uh, different line of business, we are, uh, talking about. Ventures that are established based on, uh, willingness of the parties to come up with, uh. A joint venture whereby they can, uh, make, uh, you know, commercial profits. And where can they share, uh, their respective risks, put their respective resources into. Uh, this economic process that are mainly intended to, uh, you know, make, make profits. For all the parties involved. And this is again for, uh, as I mentioned, for. Institutions that have these kind of, uh, uh, most of, most of investing, uh, on their asset side of the balance sheet. And by that, we, we, uh, we are here, uh, you know, uh. Uh, targeting the, uh, the institutions at the level of the institutions and their, and their counterparties. Uh, if the counterparty is coming from a commercial, uh, background. But, uh, the standard fits all, all the cases, all the cases of that. Willingly established, uh, uh, ventures where, which. Which aim to, uh, make, make profit and, uh, based on, uh, risk sharing and resource sharing. And, uh, so the intent here of the parties is, is clear-cut, you, as you can see, it is profit-making. That's why it's called a venture. So a venture differs from other, other, you know, structures that you mentioned. Uh, because of the element of profit and the risk, risk-sharing, uh, approach. Is that okay? Any other question?
Um, no questions.
So for the pass-through approach, uh, the investor should recognize the assets, always as liabilities, any, any corresponding liabilities to these assets, if any. Uh, that underlie the participatory venture in its book of account, applying the initial recognition principles, uh, as applicable in line with the relevant, uh, FAS. Uh, proportionate assets and liabilities shall be recognized, applying the same principles. In cases where the arrangement has more than one investor. So this is in a, in a, in a. In short, this is the, uh, the pass-through accounting approach, uh. For recognition of the assets and any, uh, corresponding liabilities in the books of accounts of, uh, the, the partners. Any question on this, uh, method or approach? Uh, subsequent to initial recognition, uh, then relying assets or liabilities. Shall be measured according to requirements of this relevant A U F FASs. Uh, proportionate accounting shall also apply where applicable. Uh, uh, the standard explains that this shall be recognized on a gross basis by the investor. Uh, uh, that is, assets to be included in assets and liabilities in liabilities, uh, if any. Uh, so, uh, here, we have to show the full picture of the, of the venture, not, uh, the, the net basis where, you know. Only respective interests are, uh, are reported. Uh. This is a good, good gross pa- basis, in, in, in short, uh, gross basis, you know, uh. Shows all the, uh, the aggregate amounts, uh, without any deductions. Because here, uh, we are talking about the, the level of the, of the, you know, uh. Uh, the venture itself. An investor shall determine, uh, subsequent management also continued, uh, investor shall determine at each period and. Impairment of the value of the investment and their pass-through approach. This is also a common practice that we take impairment into account over time, uh. At the time of subsequent measurement, we have to, uh. Consider this scenario, that assets may, uh, may experience impairment in value. And then, uh, this should be in line with the respective, um, or, um. respective, yes, A U F FAS, in which situation is fast thirty, as you are aware. The settlement risk as well as existence of earnest commitments, uh, such as guarantee or sale underlying, undertaking. Shall also be considered for impairment purposes. So impairment or takes into account this, uh, you know, full, uh, set of factors. Uh, for, uh, in the situation of, um, subsequent measurement for revenues. So, so we, we start with, with the, uh, recognized amount, the amount of the investment, then any revenues and expenses related to that also. Uh, unless contrary to a specific requirement of the standard, resulting revenues and expenses, gains or losses. arising from the participatory venture shall be measured and accounted for respectively according to the nature of the contracts. In line with requirements of, uh, relevant A U F FASs applicable to such transactions. A normal accounting, uh, policies of the investor shall apply in respect of such matters. Uh, revenues, expenses, gains or losses shall be recognized on a gross basis again. The same shall be included in respective line items in the financial statements of the investor. Uh, working partners. Now, if we are talking about, uh, reporting in the books of the, of the investor, what about the working partner's, uh, share of profit? The working partner's share of profit payable according to the contractual arrangements shall be recognized as an expense. At the end of each financial reporting period in the books of the investor. Based on the best estimate of amounts payable, uh, as at the respective period end. Based on contractual and constructive obligations. Uh, working, uh, same paragraph, working partner's share of profit continued. Any contingent or conditional variable share of profit payable to the working partner. As per contractual terms shall be recognized as an expense based on best estimates of the same, applying the fe- the following principles. Uh, variable share of profit related to past performance based on contractual arrangement shall be recognized as a liability. When it becomes due on an accrual basis, this is in line with Sharia. Variable share of profit related to past performance which is contingently reversible on a cumulative basis. Uh, for example, reversible in case of a future loss. Or is contingently dependent on a decision, uh, by a third party or of a third party. Uh, such as the case where a decision of a trustee at maturity of the transaction would be needed. Uh, shall be recognized as a liability when due irrespective of probability of their reversal. Again, this is, you know, uh, to reflect. The Sharia, uh, you know, uh, Sharia principles and rules with, for relate, in relation to. Uh, recognition of liabilities. Uh, this, actually, these are among the, the, the most critical, you know, uh, components of, of. Accounting reporting for this kind of transactions where. Uh, Sharia, Sharia, uh, permessibilities, impermissibilities are taken or embedded in the, in the accounting treatment. This is a good, very good example where, uh, Sharia, uh, comes, you know, uh, hand to. In, in hand with accounting treatment and is reflected properly on the accounting treatment. Uh, and then again, as, as I mentioned earlier, the starting point for all our accounting standards, uh. Come from Sharia standards in the cases where we have certain standards, uh, you know, covered on the Sharia side. For Murab, for Mudarabah and Moucharaka, yes, as I mentioned earlier, we have these standards. Uh, we continue that working partner's share of profit, reversal of liability, earlier recorded in line with the B above. Uh, for example, in the case to recover a loss or, uh, against, uh, below par performance shall be recognized as a reduction of the respective. Uh, expenses, this is, uh, accounting logic. In line with, uh, in, in which, uh, you know, such reversers occur, in line with the, in, in the period in which such, uh. Reversers occur, also that here we are applying, uh, different, different principles, all of which, uh, are consistent. We are applying the matching principle, we are applying the, you know, the, the. Proper right and, and obligations of every, uh, every stakeholder or every, um, uh, counterparty to the transaction in line with Sharia. So as you can see, for in every, in every para, almost you have these, all these elements at play together. Uh, to reflect the, 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 the reality of, uh, this, or speciality of this, uh, you know. Financial accounting standards that are developed by A U F, uh, which are. Uh, very much unique and very much, you know, distinguished in terms of, uh, uh. Their, you know, ability to account for the nature of the transactions, for the. Uh, certain, certain elements in the transactions that relate to, uh, financial reporting and, uh, accounting. And for the, the many, many aspects like the risk, risk reward profile, the. Profit distribution, the business model of the transaction. So a- as you can see. All these elements will be at play, uh, time to time, and you can come across that in, in all A U F standards that. Now have been newly issued or, uh, are under revision, uh. Uh, particularly participatory ventures that, that we are covering today. Do we have any questions so far?
Uh, there is one question from Dr. Munir. Uh, proportionate is based on cost or market value?
Proportion of what? Of the interest, and interest of e- every party? Can, can he speak?
He didn't, uh, he didn't specify in the question, maybe he can speak.
Can he specify that the item that you are, you are meaning by this? Because, because for proportionate, we have different, uh, different items. But usually here, we don't, we don't talk about, uh, you know. Uh, future values, we talk about. But usually here we don't, we don't talk about, uh, you know, uh, future values, we talk about results. We talk about, because this is again a Sharia requirement that you cannot distribute profits, you cannot, uh, you know, uh, incur expenses that didn't arise. So we cannot talk about, uh, only expectations unless we need to do certain, you know, preliminary, uh, accounting and later on we reflect the actual results, uh, on the, on the account, on the, uh, books of accounts of, uh, every respective party.
Brother, uh, Dr. Munir, you said, uh, it is related to proportionate allocation of assets, paragraph twelve or thirteen.
Actually, uh, it, it, it depends on the, on the stage. If you are talking about initial recognition, uh, we have to do that based on, uh, fair valuation. Uh, fair valuation if, if the, if the, the assets are provided in kind uh, at the cost, if the assets or at their, you know, monetary values of the assets are provided in cash. And so it depends on the, the type of assets that we are talking about uh, and the, the stage of recognition. But again, uh, we have, I U F applies different measures, all of these measures are in line with Sharia, I mean, the measurement basis. And we have to comply with this measurement basis that you can come across in, uh, in FAS one, in the framework and in respective, uh, standards. Depending on the, on the mode of investing, mode of finance or the product itself or the structure. So this may, you know, vary from transaction to transaction, from stage to stage depending on the, of the case. But, uh, all in all, we don't only refer to, uh, to, uh, in our, in our literature, we don't, uh, refer to market value. We use fair value, which is a derivation of, uh, market value at a different level. Uh, that, that is more in line with, uh, Sharia requirements. Uh, because in, under Sharia, the, the, the best measure of value is considered to be, uh, fair value and this has, you know, doesn't contradict our, our, uh, accounting, uh, you know, requirements and measures also because uh, this is, uh, much closer to justice as we, uh, it's fairer, much closer to justice and it reflects the, the, the rights obligations of the various parties in a, in a, in a, in a fair manner. So, so fair, fair value, uh, fair value as a measure is, uh, at the, at, you know, uh, at the, at the, it comes, uh, as, as a core, you know, uh, at the core of financial reporting for certain, uh, not all the, not all the transactional products, but for certain assets that their values are, uh, or has this kind of connection with, uh, with the, with the market. Any other questions?
No questions.
Yeah, so, uh, we are going one by one through all the, uh, accounting, uh, uh, accounting, uh, uh, elements, uh, or the stages where we start with initial recognition, uh, measurement, uh, subsequent, uh, yeah, any subsequent measurement, uh, 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 the presentation disclosure of this, uh, you know, uh, items and, uh, amounts. Uh, so for every scenario, we have these, uh, full, uh, set of, uh, accounting tools. Uh, presentation disclosure, uh, all asset liabilities, revenues, expenses, gains and losses and their pass-through approach shall be presented as we mentioned on a gross basis rather than being presented on a net basis. And then these are to be clubbed uh, on a line-by-line basis with the respective assets liabilities, revenues and expenses and gains or losses in the financial statements of the investor. These shall however be presented and disclosed in a manner that the same can be identified as relating to the participatory venture through additional disclosures. Because for the investor, you know, it, it, it may, the investor may, uh, have different, uh, different ventures, may be involved in different ventures, different transactions. So, uh, in so far as this, uh, this can be useful. Also, reference or, uh, disclosure and providing additional disclosures to, uh, to this, uh, specific participatory venture is also, uh, recommended. Uh, the working partner's share of profit determined in line with requirements, paragraphs fifteen to seventeen shall be included in uh, related expenses and, uh, disclosed, uh, appropriately. Because here we, uh, have to be, uh, as, as much transparent on this kind of, uh, the profit, uh, share, share, share profit determination, share profit determination and the distribution. So, uh, this is also come, uh, as like holds a center stage for Sharia. Uh, as you will, uh, always see that, uh, it is one of the key differences with the, with, uh, international standards that I U F standard focuses on this, uh, uh, particular processes that, uh, relate to, uh, distribution of, uh, of rise profits, uh, and, uh, uh, cover, a coverage of, uh, losses in line with, uh, contractual, uh, contractual setups and in line with, uh, Sharia, uh, requirements. Uh, any question before we move?
Uh, there is a question from Mr. In ways. I think there is no provision in the E D for termination during the contract.
I didn't get the question. What, what, what does he mean by that? Can, can you elaborate on that please? No, uh, no ca- no coverage of what?
No provision in the E D for termination. If you can, uh...
Termination of the, 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 the structure or the, the, the venture?
I think this is what he meant, during the contract.
Yes, we will come into that, we come to that, Insha Allah. Uh, any other question?
Uh, no more questions.
Yeah, actually for different scenarios, uh, even under the old standards, we have the, the exit strategy. Exit strategy is, is, is well covered and, uh, it is, it is there where the, that, uh, the rights and obligations of different parties are, uh, if, and I, if I decided to, to, uh, to terminate early, this would be subject to, uh, different set of, uh, requirements. Uh, we will, uh, come into that, uh, and, uh, if, uh, the, the items or if the investments that I have are still in physical form or in partially in, in monetary form or whatever form, this will determine the way I, uh, distribute the, uh, respective shares of every, uh, each and every, uh, partner and counterparty into the transactions in a, in a, in a fair, in a fair manner and in line with Sharia principles and rules. But this is, uh, yeah, and overall this is, uh, the concept of, uh, constructive liquidation. Uh, in, 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 in which case, uh, it, it may apply in here, though it is actual, I know, but, uh, constructive, uh, liquidation, uh, calls for, uh, calculation of the, the outcomes of the ventures uh, prematurely before, uh, before the end of the, uh, investment period or the maturity of the, of the investment or maturity of the venture. Uh, so i- in a sense, this, this is, you know, uh, this is subject to, uh, this kind of, uh, premature, uh, arrangements, uh, that gives an exit strategy or exit, exit way for the, uh, the contracting parties if they decide. Because once they, they start, Mudaraba, Musharaka are binding. Uh, but, uh, it's up to both parties to agree on an exit. Uh, and this is, you know, uh, covered and, uh, under, particularly under Sharia, uh, the, the case of Sharia. Here is, is, uh, that we have, uh, certain, you know, uh, hikam or p- provisions for that, uh, that will also be reflected on the accounting, uh, treatment. But, uh, we'll come into that. Uh, in addition to the normal presentation and disclosure requirements applicable as per respective FAS, the minimum disclosure requirements shall be as follows: summary of contractual relationships and significant terms and conditions. Uh, ownership structure of the venture in, in pro- uh, the proportion of participatory venture owned by the investors in, in, uh, the event of having more than one investors. This is again all common sense disclosures, uh, the nature of underlying assets and activities managed under the participatory venture. And any contingent, contingent variable profit payable not recognized as a liability, uh, it has to be also disclosed properly. Uh, accounting by the investor and the net investment in participatory venture accounting approach uh, on initial recognition, while applying the net investment, but pretty, but participatory venture accounting approach, an investor shall initially recognize the investment made as an investment in a participatory venture at cost. This is one of the measures, as I mentioned. At the time when it is made available to the prospective working partner for investment. So here, uh, this is again, this enforces both accounting and Sharia, uh, it is, it is recognized at the time it is made available. Uh, to the, to the working partner. Because in, in which situation, the work, the working partner would be enabled, empowered to initiate the investing, uh, process. Uh, otherwise, uh, in, in, in Sharia, if you, if you are talking about just, you know, uh, going into, signing the contract, entering into the contract and without, without empowering, without, without enabling the partner to initiate the work. So, uh, again, this cannot be, uh, the, the, the transaction cannot be, uh, initially recognized and cannot be uh, established as an item in the financial statements. In case of investment in kind, uh, or in kind investments, the initial recognition shall be based on the fair value of the in kind investment as at the date of investment. Uh, in case the investor has made investment available to the prospective working partner or partners, but the contract is yet to be initiated, such amount shall be initially recognized as an advance against investment in the participatory venture till the time such contract is initiated. So these are the different, you know, scenarios where the contracting parties may, uh, have, uh, times they pay the, the pay or earmark the amount, put it in account, but the work is not, uh, initiated. So this also in itself entails certain Sharia, Sharia requirements and this is, uh, in, in, in turn, this impacts accounting treatment at different stages. Subsequent measurement, measurement, the investment in, uh, the P V, uh, shall be measured at the end of financial reporting period at carrying amount. Uh, we mean by that, uh, the amount adjusted for additional capital contribution, if any, uh, capital withdrawers, if any, and payment of distributable profits, if, uh, there are profits and shall be adjusted to include the net share of the profit or loss of the participatory venture as attributable to the investor under the contractual arrangements and determined under the relevant FAS. As at that date. So con- connection with the date is, is very important, uh, from both accounting and Sharia perspective because at that date, uh, rights and obligations can be, can be monetarily established. And, uh, this is, uh, uh, can be, you know, fairer to all the parties and can, uh, properly, uh, account for the uh, Sharia requirements in this, in this aspect. Uh, net share of the profits and losses duly comprising the net result of the revenues, expenses, gains or losses arising from investment in participatory venture shall be determined after allocation of the working partner's share of profit, including variable profit. This is again in line with Sharia. So, uh, we don't, you know, uh, go into, uh, recognition of any, uh, net shares before we, uh, do the, uh, allocation of the share of profit of the working partner. Any questions so far?
Uh, no question.
No question. Okay, any share of losses reimbursable by the working partner as established in line with Sharia principles ruled due to the working partner's negligence and misconduct shall be recognized as a reduction in losses. Uh, or as a profit where applicable when determined as such. So, uh, this is again, uh, one of the scenarios where, uh, uh, there might be some certain foul play, uh, on, uh, on, uh, part of, uh, any of the partners. So, uh, Sharia also, uh, in, 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 in the Sharia standards, the, the issue of, um, negligence or misconduct is properly covered and this is also reflected here on the accounting treatment. So, uh, recognition shall be, uh, as a reduction in losses or as profit where applicable. Uh, but only when such negligence and misconduct is, uh, properly determined following the Sharia mechanisms in that, uh, that, that regard. The investor shall determine at each period and impairment of the value of the investment in a participatory venture in line with requirements of FAS thirty. In this case, the settlement risk, as we mentioned, as well as existence of honest commitments such as guarantee or, or sale undertaking shall also be considered for impairment purposes. At this impairment will also, you know, uh, initially will impact the, the monetary, uh, amounts that uh, under which these, uh, items are, uh, reflected in the, in the, uh, financial statements and, and, and in which case this will impact the, 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 these amounts, uh, and the rights and obligations of different parties. Presentation disclosure, we continue share, uh, continue share of profits and or losses arising from investment by participatory venture shall be disclosed separately from other revenues of the investor on a net basis. In addition, the investor shall disclose the following as minimum disclosure requirements. Summary of the, uh, principal terms and conditions of the arrangements between the parties. The nature of the underlying assets and or activities managed, this is again saying here. Any contingent profit payable to the working partner not yet recognized. This is, uh, as you can see, this is like uniform disclosures that come up again and again. Uh, in respect of any investment in participatory venture which is considered material to the financial statements of the investor. The investor shall preferably provide memorandum information in respect of assets, liabilities, revenues, expenses, gains and losses, as well as the profits or losses attributable to the working partners. Uh, just to give more details about these, uh, material, uh, material, uh, uh, transactions, material, uh, accounts. Uh, given, uh, again, that the principle of materiality in accounting and, uh, given also that, uh, that this practice is, is, uh, much, much closer into, uh, into, uh, uh, fairer, fairer treatment and, uh, the, uh, intending the, the respective Sharia, uh, permessibilities and impermissibilities. Uh, accounting and financial reporting in the books of account of the working partner. We are done now with, uh, with the investor. Now we are moving into the working partner. Uh, also for the working partners, we have different scenarios. Any questions so far?
No questions.
Uh, we follow the same, the same sequence of, uh, of processes. The working partner shall apply any of the following approaches for accounting and financial reporting of its interest in a, uh, participatory venture. This were summed up in the, in the table. In case the, the venture is controlled by the investors only on the other side. So off-balance-sheet accounting approach as described in paragraphs thirty-two to thirty-seven shall be a- applied by the working partner. In case the participatory venture is controlled by the working partner himself or herself only, then quasi-equity accounting approach, uh, shall be applied as, uh, prescribed in paragraphs thirty-eight to forty-seven. So, eh, for every scenario, as you can see, there is, it's, you know, accounting logic for that and that, uh, the need to also account for certain, uh, financial reporting requirements for every situation. In case the participatory venture is under share control uh, of the investors and the working partner, the net investment in, uh, participatory venture accounting approach shall be, uh, uh, followed similar to that of the investor that as we have seen earlier. And here we have to consider that the working partner's capacity or investor is his primary capacity as prescribed in the, uh, paragraphs twenty-one to thirty that we have covered. Accounting by the working partner, again, uh, under the off-balance-sheet accounting approach. Under this approach, the working partner shall not recognize the assets or liabilities underlying the participatory venture controlled by the investors in his book, books of accounts. If the working partner previously owned such assets and abilities through equity or quasi-equity, the working partner shall derecognize the assets first and any corresponding liabilities from the, his books, books of account. And any gain or loss on such disposal shall also be, uh, recognized immediately. This falls immediately, being the difference between the carrying value of such assets and liabilities and the value agreed upon contractually. Then, uh, uh, under the same approach, uh, of balance sheet, net, uh, uh, the, with respect to then investors' share of profits on the, on the other side. So now we are talking about the counterparty. Now we are, uh, when we, we need to, uh, do the accounting for this transaction, we have also to consider the net share of the, uh, investor on the other side. So net share of the profits duly comprising the net result of revenues, expenses, gains and losses arising from investment in the participatory venture after allocation of the investors or investors' pro- uh, share of profit and losses where applicable shall be recognized periodically. Uh, any share of losses reimbursable, uh, for different, uh, reasons as established in line with Sharia. uh for different reasons as established in line with Sharia principles and rules due to the working partner's negligence and misconduct shall be recognized as an expense when uh determined as such. Again, uh this is the same treatment here. Uh contingent or conditional share of profit receivable by the working partner as per contractual terms shall be shall be recognized when there, there remains no material uncertainty with regards to its recoverability duly applying the following principles. The variable share of profit related to past performance, but past performance based on contractual arrangement shall be recognized as and when it becomes receivable. Again, this is a Sharia requirement. And the, 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 the issue of material uncertainty and its impact on recoverability is, is here very important. And this itself, in itself, it's also impacts our uh recognition uh process. Uh accounting by the working partner under the same approach of balance sheet investor's share of profit. A variable share of profit related to past performance which is contingently reversible on a cumulative basis. Uh for example, reversible in case of a future loss or is contingently dependent on decision by third party, the decision of trustee for example, at maturity of that transaction shall not be recognized except to the extent of the best estimate of amounts recoverable with reasonable certainty based on justifiable future projections and established customary practice. After allowing for reasonable margin, margin for uncertainties. And then uh the variable share of profit related to or fully dependent on future performance shall not be currently recognized irrespective of their probability of recoverability. Uh here uh uh because we are talking about the current period, so we uh exclude that of uh current uh recognition, uh because uh you know, this doesn't impact the current period. Presentation and disclosure in case of applying of balance sheet accounting approach, working partner shall at a minimum, the same now we come into presentation disclosure. Uh summary of the assets that may require uh minimum requirements include summary of the assets, liabilities and related movement, including income on such assets and expenses thereon collectively for all of balance sheet participatory venture. These shall be disclosed appropriately in the financial statements, either in the form of a statement of off balance sheet assets under management or where applicable, or in the notes to uh financial statements, the, the, the standard is flexible on that. Uh depending on the, 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 the partner or counter, counterparty uh needs. The total administrative and operational expenses charged with the participatory venture along with a brief description of its major components based on materiality of the amount. Also, the amounts of profits or losses attributable to the investors and the working partner respectively identifying any variable incentive or tiered profits. And the basis applied by the working partner for determining variable share of profits from the venture if such profits are material. Any questions so far?
Uh no questions.
No question. Okay, the cumulative amount of contingent share of profits receivable but not recognized due to conditions provided earlier, as I mentioned. Disclosure of transfers of assets from or to owned assets or to from the participatory venture shall be adequately made in line with requirements of respective FAS. Uh so here we are talking about transfer, transfer of assets, so in this situation we refer to the uh the standards on transfers of assets. Uh accounting now by the working partner under the quasi-equity accounting approach. On initial recognition, under this approach, a working partner shall recognize the amount of quasi-equity of a participatory venture in his book, books of account. That would be equal to the amount, uh the amount of cash received, here there is a title or uh the word uh of. In the event of investment in cash, so if we have the investment in cash, must be the amount of cash received. Uh B, the fair value of underlying assets, net of liabilities if any, as at the date of investment in the event of investment in kind. So as I mentioned earlier, depending on the item itself, we will ha- we have to apply different measures. Every measure justifies its, or it's, it's used because of the uh different nature of the assets that is being measured. Uh continued initial recognition, at the time of initial recognition of quasi-equity of the participatory venture in line with the requirements of paragraph thirty eight, previous paragraph. The underlying assets and liabilities if any shall be recognized in the books of account of the working partner at the carry, the current carrying value of such underlying assets and liabilities already owned by the partner as appearing in the books of accounts of the partner in case the investment is received in cash and the value assigned to the underlying assets and liabilities that is in this case equal to their carrying value or at the contractually agreed value of such underlying asset liabilities already owned by the working partner in case the investment is received in cash and the value assigned to the underlying assets is different from their carrying, carrying value. And at the contractually agreed value of the underlying assets and liabilities previously owned by an investor as at the end of investment in the event of investment in kind. This covers the different, you know, cases as I mentioned, in case of application of paragraph thirty nine B. Any difference between the contractually agreed value and carrying value of the underlying assets, net of liabilities shall be accounted for as follows. Any gain or loss not being an investment loss shall be amortized by the working partner over the period of participatory venture. Why? Because here, as, as we are saying, it is, it is not related to the investment process. So in which case, uh deferment and amortization is called for for, you know, uh spreading out the impact of such irregular, unusual uh items uh across the different periods to uh better, you know, reflect the uh performance of the venture at or during the extended period, not uh just only uh in part of the period. Unless the participatory venture does not have a fixed period of maturity or if it is not committed or reasonably expected that the working partner will acquire full ownership of the underlying assets of the venture, either through gradual transfer or at the end of the term. In line, in, in which case such gain or loss will be, shall be immediately recognized by the working partner. So we have to differentiate here between two cases as, as the standard identified. Uh because for every, for every case, uh there is a treatment and there is be, be behind that, there is the, the justifiable, uh you know, uh Al-Hukum, Sharia in addition to the practicability of the uh the practice that we are following in this uh particular uh area. Uh also here, any loss being an impairment loss shall be immediately recognized by the working partner, given the nature of the loss or here it is in, related to impairment, so it is the, the, the treatment is that we recognize it immediately. Uh subsequent measurement now, uh next stage. Subsequent to the uh initial recognition, working partner shall follow its normal accounting policies established in accordance with relevant FAS, uh FASs with regard to accounting for the underlying assets and liabilities and a recognition of uh relevant uh items, revenues, expenses, gains and losses, including any impairment uh related to these assets if any uh which relate collectively to the participatory venture. The investor's share in profit or loss payable shall be also recognized at the end of each financial reporting period as an expense, this is a common practice. You will come across that time to time in the same standard. Any share of losses reimbursable also, uh as established in line with Sharia uh principles and rules due to the, to negligence or misconduct by the working partner shall be recognized as an expense. Again, this is a common practice. Uh a provision shall be maintained for any contingent or conditional share of profit attributable to the working partner as per contractual terms in respect of any variable share of profit related to past performance which is contingently reversible on a cumulative basis. As we mentioned earlier, reversible in the case of future loss or contingently dependent on a decision by a third party such as a trustee or at, uh at, at the, at the maturity of the transaction. And out of this provision that has been made, any amount may be taken to the income if and only if and to the extent that there remains no material uncertainty based on the justifiable future projections, any established customary practice. So the, the purpose of this uh provision is to uh make this uncertainty, you know, uh as, as much as uh in, in material. Uh in which case, uh you know, uh this impacts accounting and impacts to recognition, uh subsequent measurements of this uh these amounts in the books of accounts of the working partner. Uh presentation disclosures in case of applying the quasi-equity, the working partner shall at a minimum uh provide the following disclosures. Summary of the underlying asset liabilities and related movement as we mentioned earlier. Including, you know, uh expenses thereon collectively for all participatory ventures to be disclosed appropriately in the notes. Duly identifying the amounts attributable to quasi-equity, this is very important, we have to uh identify the amounts that uh come from quasi-equity and commingled equity respectively. Because for every, every tier we have, it's, you know, uh a different set of uh requirements. The total administrative and operational expenses as well as impairment losses on the assets of the venture if, if uh in existence, should be charged to the participatory venture along with a brief description of its uh major components here. Uh once charged, we have also to provide these kind of disclosures. Uh mainly the major components of uh these uh items. And then the amounts of profits, losses attributable to investors and the working partner respectively identifying any variable incentive or tiered profit as well as the amounts of profits attributable to the working partner on account of commingled equity. The bases applied by the working partner for determining variable share of profits which it receives from the profits of the participatory venture. And uh the cumulative amount uh of and movement in the provision that we have created against the contingent share of profits or preservation uh due to the conditions that we mentioned in the previous paragraph. Disclosure of, of transfers of assets from and to uh owned assets or to from participatory venture shall be adequately made in line with requirements of uh respective FAS. Because of the, you know, the different nature of these two uh two types of uh of, of assets. Uh the, and following the requirements of uh uh the respective accounting standard FAS uh on transfers of assets. In addition to the respective requirement, specific requirement of this standard, the requirements of respective FAS also applicable to quasi-equity shall be applied by the working partner insofar as practicable. This is again the issue of practicability as I mentioned earlier. Specific considerations for perpetual, uh we have now, we have, we have come now to the uh specific cases that may come under the, 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 the banner of uh perpetua- the participatory ventures. Those are, uh you know, these cases may, we may come uh you know, face to face with in practical uh life uh in, in, in reality where uh different, uh different modes of transactions are carried out by different financial institutions in different jurisdictions. So these practices are also covered insofar as these practices are in line with Sharia. Certain part, participatory ventures through uh in, though in respect to circumstances may be perpetual in nature that in the sense that they are not subject to liquidation at the fixed maturity date or these do not have a put option of redemption in the hands of the investor, so the investor does not have the right to go and put it back to the uh to the other parties. Uh in this, this is in, in, in terms of the concept of uh perpetual, perpetual participatory venture. Uh there is a reputable presumption that such participatory ventures may qualify for accounting as equity under requirements of relevant FASs and presented as separate class within equity, given the specific nature of these uh, these uh ventures. Um because for, for equity, you don't have, for example, the, the put option. Here, if, if you have the put option and still it is a kind of, you know, a stake or interest in, in equity, so you have to classify it uh separately within equity, but the, it, it has to be uh subject to its own, you know, reporting. Uh in such case, the working partner shall follow the accounting requirements applicable to the underlying assets and liabilities et cetera, under the quasi-equity accounting approach as prescribed in uh paragraphs thirty eight to forty six. If practicable, while following other, other requirements of their respective or relevant FAS. Uh the investor shall follow the net investment in participatory venture accounting approach as prescribed in the paragraphs that we have covered twenty one to thirty. Uh uh forms of transfer of control, uh because as we mentioned earlier, the transfer of control also determines the, the relationship between the that the, the, the parties and which party is required to uh or has the right to uh control and to uh uh to recognize, to record the transaction is, you know, in its books of accounts. The transfer of ownership and any corresponding control for investors to working partner in case of most participatory ventures uh takes place through transfer of control which entails risk and rewards incidental to ownership of such underlying assets under separate arrangement taking the form of either the following, sale undertaking by the investor or purchase undertaking by the working partner executable after the end of the venture term or at times when, this is uh again one of the exit, you know, exit strategies. When uh uh this is par- par- partial exit or gradually exit. When a specific event triggers early liquidation or participatory uh of the participatory venture. A gradual sale of proportionate ownership gradually, uh sorry, generally in the form of ownership units through a promised mechanism over the term of the participatory venture, so it might be through uh an undertaking or it might be through gradual sale of the uh proportionate ownership uh of every each and every respective uh part, partner or in the, in the structure. And then partial redemption of uh the investor's equity through partial sale of proportionate ownership. Uh generally in the form of ownership units based on mutual agreement, if the agreement is there before intended maturity of the venture. A transfer of control from investor to working partner continued, the timing of the transfer. Uh transfer of control shall be accounted for by both parties at the time of transfer of control of the underlying asset or proportion of that to the working partner. The timing of transfer of corresponding control of the asset or proportion uh of the assets to the uh working partner shall coincide with the timing of consummation of the relevant contract, either through uh documentation of offer uh and acceptance of the transfer of ownership uh uh or proportionate ownership of the underlying assets or uh payment against purchase of such units as a continuing arrangement and acceptance of such payment if already documented through, so documentation here is very important for those transactions that be repetitive in nature. If already documented through a purchase and taking in line with Sharia principles and rules and contractual arrangements. Uh recognition of transfer uh complete or partial under all forms of intended or mutually agree, mutually agreed transfer of, of control or proportion thereof from the investors to working partner, the tran- transaction of transfer of control of underlying assets and liabilities or proportion shall be recorded separately from the transactional investment in participatory venture and recognizing returns thereon in line with requirements of paragraph fifty. The investor, investors irrespective of the accounting approach followed shall derecognize. This is, you know, again, uh accounting logic, shall derecognize because this is the uh how the transaction in, ends up, uh once this uh transfer is, is carried out. Shall derecognize the underlying assets and liabilities or proportion, the respective proportion from their books of account while uh recognizing again or loss on such a transfer being a difference between the carrying value and the fair value of the consideration received at the time of order receivable, if not, if not uh actually received uh at the time of the transfer. Uh any, any questions so far?
Uh no questions.
No questions, okay. Uh the working partner at the time of partial acquisition of control shall apply the respective accounting treatment from the following corresponding to the accounting approach being applied in case of applying the quasi-equity approach. Uh it shall be, shall record a, a reduction from the amount of quasi-equity reflected in its financial statements attributable to the investors while recognizing gain or loss, again, same, same scenario, same process here on such transfer being the difference between carrying value and the qua- of the quasi-equity and the fair value of the consideration uh paid or payable because in this case it is just the opposite with where the other party uh has to pay. Uh paid or payable, because in this case it is just the opposite with where the other party uh has to pay. Uh and uh these amounts might be actually paid or might be payable depending on the situation. In case uh of applying the net investment in participatory venture approach. Shall decrease the amount, shall increase the amount reflected as net investment in respective participatory venture at cost. Of such additionally acquired units for the the party that acquires these units. Uh there is a reputable presumption that working partner applying the off balance sheet accounting approach. May not experience partial transfer of control from the investor except for extraordinary circumstances. In such an event, the the working partner shall reassess the suitability suitability of accounting approach and shall. Preferably change the the same to either of the following as considered appropriate, either quasi equity accounting approach, which may become more suitable. When it is considered that the working partner controls the venture or net investment in participatory venture. Accounting approach, which may become more suitable when it is considered that shared control exists. So again and again, you can see. That the element of control determines the different scenarios and determine that that the flow of resources. And how we can, you know, uh treat these kind of uh transfers between the parties. Uh the working partners, at time of complete acquisition control, shall apply the respective accounting treatment. For the following, that correspond to accounting approach being applied in case of applying off balance sheets initially. Uh the 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 the. The working partner shall recognize all underlying assets liabilities of the venture in its book of accounts. While recognizing any gain or losses on such transactions. Uh measured as a difference between the fair value of the assets and liabilities. Uh recognized in its book of account and as a result of such uh uh transfer of control and. The consideration paid or payable in respect of transfer of complete control of participatory venture, again, the same process. In case of applying the quasi equity approach, counting approach. Uh the part the the partner shall uh derecognize the amount of quasi equity reflected in its financial statements. Attributable to the investors while recognizing any gain or loss uh on such recognition. That again, the 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 loss or gain is a difference between the carrying value of the. Uh quasi equity or that portion of quasi equity and the consideration paid or payable. Or again, in case of applying the net investment in participatory venture approach, shall recognize net investment in participatory venture and recognize all. The underlying asset liabilities of the participatory venture in its books of account. While recognizing a gain or loss, if any, on such transactions as a difference between fair value of the underlying assets and liabilities. Uh as we mentioned, and the carrying value of net investment in participatory ventures plus here. The consideration paid or payable in respect of transfer uh of complete control of the venture. Any questions so far?
No questions.
As you can see, all the scenarios have something in common that uh on on in case of the 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 transfer uh. The 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 unit or the the respective share of proportionate share of that uh. Uh you know, ownership transferred has to be accounted for at two different levels, the unit itself and any uh profits or losses. Recognized as part of the process, so this is uh this has certain commonalities between the different scenarios. Uh uh onerous commitments for redemption, uh gradual transfer, a commitment. To transfer ownership or proportion of the uh ownership from investor to working partner at the promised value or at fair value. Which at times may be different from carrying value of the uh net assets of the venture. May turn onerous in certain situations on either party if it results. In an expe- in an expected loss on such redemption or gradual transfer of ownership. In which case such uh onerous commitments may exist in the form of purchase undertaking by the working partner or sale undertaking. By the investor or gradual transfer arrangement between the parties. So these arrangements in, you know, result in this kind scenario of uh onerous commitments. And investors or working partner being subject to this onerous commitment shall record a provision against such onerous commitment. In line with the requirements of uh uh fast thirty. Uh gradual transfer of ownership, there is a probable uh presumption that participatory venture with gradual transfer of ownership. In case of diminishing musharaka here with shirkat alaht. May not be uh may not be eligible for any accounting approach except for, in case of investor, the net. Investment in participatory venture accounting approach. And in case of working partner, the quasi equity approach. So otherwise, it it may not be eligible. So. Here we are, because it's a gradual transfer, so uh uh to start with, we say that the 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 presumption uh in entails that. Uh it it may not be eligible. Uh except in these, under these two uh scenarios. Because uh of the uh specific you know situation of gradual transfer. In case of a variable participatory venture, variable equity. Uh only the following accounting uh approach shall be applied, in case of investor, the net investment. Uh in participatory venture, because this again accounting logic, be connect, if it is a variable equity, uh you you need to. You know, uh reflect that in the net investment in the in participatory venture. And in case of working partner, the quasi equity, because on the other side you have to uh apply the quasi equity accounting approach. Any drawdowns and redemptions of the quasi equity of the investor and the variable equity participatory venture takes place at cost. In line with the relevant uh rules and principles and contractual arrangement. And hence are accounted for at cost, equal to the amount of cash received or deemed invested, or sorry, or redeemed without recognition of a gain. Against the carrying uh value. Any questions so far? Uh I I just want to remind our valued participants and colleagues that. Uh whatever you may come across in terms of drafting of the standard or any conceptual uh. Uh issues or any treatments that you feel there might be. Uh a better, you know, a better approach or better uh treatment or better methodology. That is both in line with Sharia and with in line with the Ayufi uh uh framework, please uh please come up and. Either now you can share your views or you can send us your uh comments in writing and. Inshallah, we will make sure that we take that into consideration through the respective working group. Uh under the same, under the same title, uh variable quasi uh. Variable equity participatory venture, attribution of profit or loss to the respective parties. Shall be made at the end of financial reporting period according to the weighted average balances as remained outstanding during the period and the profit. Sharing ratios as contractually agreed in light with Sharia principles. And in addition to the specific requirements of the standard, the requirements of respective FAS applicable to quasi equity shall be also. Applied by the working partners as much as practicable. Risk reserves, accounting for risk reserves, if any, shall take place in line with the contractual requirements, considering the requirements of. Uh respective FAS on uh risk reserves, adequate disclosure shall be made in respect of balances and off movements in respect of risk reserves in line with the. Uh disclosure requirements, you know, contained in the in the reserve uh in the reserve standard. Uh accounting and financial reporting by the participatory venture. Now we covered both both sides of that uh transactions are. You know, separate sides, the the investors and the working partners. Now we look at the participatory ventures, but participatory ventures uh at large. If 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 the if the venture is is uh is in control of this uh, the venture itself is in control of the underlying assets. Not uh you know, either party. So in this situation. Uh the objective of accounting, eventual reporting for uh participatory venture is determined as follows. Uh is to provide timely and faithful information about. Financial position and results of operation. This is very important. We have to bear this in mind that. Here the objective is 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 different. To provide timely and faithful information about the financial position and results of the operation. So now we are talking about the operation at large. Of the venture to both the working partner and the the investors in order to enable them to incorporate such. Information in their respective financial statements on a periodic basis, in line with requirements of this standard. And any contractual agreed conditions, uh or also as required by regulations in certain countries. Uh summarize financial information of the participatory venture as a virtual entity shall be prepared, this is very important. In line with requirements of this standard on a periodic basis, commensurate with the financial reporting. Requirements of the working pa- partner and as well as the investors. Uh summarize financial information, set of summarize financial information of participatory venture include, shall comprise. Uh the summarized form of the following, summarize report of financial position. As I mentioned, this is very important, summarize report of income and expenses. Uh again, important, and explanatory material to the financial informations if needed. Uh we need to provide this, you know, uh complimentary financial information. Uh on certain uh certain aspects of the operation. Uh selection adoption of accounting policies for the venture, now we are talking again and just. Emphasizing on the venture, because here we are talking about the financial position of the 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 venture. Uh income statement of the venture, uh any any material, you know, information of the venture. So for when we are selecting policies, financial reporting and characteristics of summarized financial information of a. Participatory venture shall be commensurate with the nature of the business carried out. By the working partner, particularly those relevant to the participatory venture itself, while we are talking about the the working partner. Because a working partner plays uh an active role in in managing the business or the operation. The accounting policies that is selected and adopted by the uh for the purpose of financial reporting. By the venture shall generally be aligned with accounting policies adopted and applied by the working partner, again, for the same purpose. In so far as this is, in so far as this is in line with the requirements of relevant FAS. Uh accounting policies applied to the purpose of financial reporting of the participatory venture may be different from those applied by the the working partner. If either of the following conditions is met, such accounting policies. Better reflect the financial information in light of the contractual requirements between the parties and the business model of the. Participatory venture, so here different different level, uh the 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 level of the venture, which entail that, you know, better better uh. Uh the better financial information are provided in because of the. Uh specific nature of the uh and the specific requirements that the the venture itself is uh subject to. Particularly the business model of the venture. And accounting policies generally applied by the working partner are not in line with requirements of relevant, what if any of the working partner itself is uh not. Uh complying with relevant FASs. Uh or their application for the purpose of financial reporting. This may also result in a noncompliance with Sharia principles and rules. Uh determination of accounting policies and a- application of significant judgments and estimates. Like depreciation, amortization for the venture shall take into consideration both the business model, uh again, we're talking about the venture. And the term to maturity of the participatory venture. Uh considering that the business model and the expected maturity of the venture. It's expected that the accounting policy selected shall take simplified form uh and complex. Accounting treatments at times and involvement of additional financial statements. Here there might be a need to uh publish or to prepare. Uh additional financial statements like statement of other comprehensive income. Uh in this, in this situation shall not, shall not be necessary under this standard. Uh for the, you know, the the reason identified in this in this paragraph. Uh general accounting considerations, now for the, what what about the general accounting considerations for the venture itself? Accounting including initial recognition and subsequent measurement of assets, liabilities, quasi equity, equity. Where applicable and recognition of revenues, uh expenses, gains or losses. Shall be performed by the participatory venture in line with the accounting policies. Uh selected and consistently applied. Uh and the significant judgment and estimates applied by the the management of the venture. Uh any gains or losses as applicable to the investor and working partner P or two or at the time of commencement of the venture. Shall not be considered as an income, expense or gain or loss of the participatory venture. Because for the same reasons that the the venture has not commenced, you know, in earnest and. This is both a Sharia requirement and accounting practice. Any redemption of quasi equity as well as drawdowns of additional quasi equity that results in transfer of assets to or from the venture. To either party shall be accounted for at carrying value. Any additions? Uh here we come into presentation disclosures in addition to the relevant, in addition to the relevant significant presentation disclosure requirements. Stated in respective uh FAS. Uh the following are the minimum disclosure requirements. Disclosure of the nature of the venture, uh its underlying assets and main activities, including products. The underlying uh contract and the science features of contractual requirements applicable to the investment and any changes there too. As with, as well as the government structure, governance, sorry, governance structure of the participatory venture as may be applicable. And information about any ring fencing or other form of segregation of assets. From other assets of the working partner as applicable. And disclosure of fair valuation of the venture and the significant underlying assets as well as any potential potential impairment or credit losses. Along with necessary disclosures uh of uh valuation or techniques. Used to determine the fair value along with the level of observable inputs used. Uh note, fair value shall be determined with suitable frequency ensuring that. The decision making of the investors might not be affected by the obsolescence of information. And uh information about the tangibility of underlying assets where applicable in line with the Sharia principles and rules. Because the decision or the 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 issue of tangibility affects many aspects in the in the work uh. Works of the venture, particularly in certain uh, you know, situations where transfers of assets from uh or to. Uh partners may be also, uh you know, uh involved. At the time of liquidation of participatory venture, the details of transaction execution and its financial effects. On the respective parties, this is very important, this is part of the exit strategy that we mentioned. And balances off and movements in risk reserves if these risk reserves have been uh actually created. Uh disclosure of uh any charity and its uh movement, including any income taken to charity, if any. And the way it is disposed. Uh disclosures about Zakha related to uh participatory venture in line with the requirements of the Ayufi Ayufi standard on Zakha. And with that, we uh we have, you know, reached the end of the the standard. Uh for every standard, we have uh uh the 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 board discusses and agrees to set. Uh an effective date. Uh that day takes into consideration uh multiple aspects of uh application. It gives uh at times, it gives um, you know. Uh more room for institutions to readjust their uh their uh reporting. And to start uh moving into the new uh new standard under the new regime. So uh this effective date is usually set like one or two years from the date of issuance depending on. Complexity of the standard and the uh specific requirements for certain institutions such as, for example, in the case of Takafu where. And the 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 Takafu system may need to be like uh properly uh, you know, uh readjusted. Uh with this, in certain situations takes more time. So uh uh an extended period for uh mandatory mandatory applications uh is is offered. But still, in all situations, early adoption is encouraged. For this standard beginning on or after the first of January twenty twenty six, if inshallah it is issued uh this year. Uh transitional provisions and for certain standards, we add transitional profit provisions. Uh an institution may opt to apply this standard on a prospective basis for transactions executed or. On or after the effective date, if uh an institution applies this transitional provision, it shall disclose the impact. So that that the. The purpose here is that the institution, if if it is given this, you know, leverage to for for application, for adoption. Uh they can also uh uh apply and uh do that at their own level, but. Uh the the standard calls for uh disclosure of the impact of this uh. Transition or migration from uh over over time. The impact of that is is, you know, uh of a material, a material importance and it has to be uh disclosed properly. Amendments to other standards, uh as we mentioned at the beginning, it supersedes fast three. Mudarab financing and fast four musharaka financing. Uh once it's issued, it will supersede both standards. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil Alameen, uh and thank you very much. If you have any questions. Uh please uh proceed and uh come into the floor. People can either. Uh, people can either, you know, uh, talk, address the audience, uh, live or, uh, drop their comments.
Uh, brother, there is a question from Mister Sayyid Mtiyas Abbas. Uh, he's saying there may be an appendix showing illustrations to comprehend them more clearly. But, uh...
Yeah, il- illustrate, illustrate the financial statements he means, uh. Actually, this, this takes place at, uh, different levels for different standards. Uh, we will consider the practicality of that, Insha Allah. Yeah, actually, for certain standards, we issued illustratives. For fast one, also we issued illustratives, though these illustratives are not, uh, don't have the na- the, the nature of a standard. They, uh, they are just, you know, uh, com- complimentary, uh, no, uh, no, uh, not mandatory in nature, uh, but, uh, can provide, uh, you know, clear, clear examples, clear, uh, format about, uh, you know, the, the way, uh, financial statements are, are presented. That might be important, we are noting down your, uh, your suggestion and, uh, you may, uh, need to, I may, I need to refer you to, uh, fast one illustratives. You can also have a look at this, uh, for certain standards, we are issuing illustratives, uh, set of illustratives like, uh, for, for waqf, like, uh, waqf and interim reporting, uh, Zaka. So, uh, depending on the evaluation of the board and the need, uh, practical need for issuance of such illustratives, yes, Insha Allah, we can consider that. And this can also come as part of the broader, you know, uh, um, uh, efforts that are being, uh, expensed at the, uh, uh, level of Ayufi and the board to come up with, uh, uh, guidelines for implementation, Insha Allah. But this is an, uh, you know, I, I don't think tasks, to, to say the least, uh, and it may, uh, take more time, Insha Allah, and you can, we can hope that it can any, uh, be, uh, be done as, as, you know, as soon as possible, but, uh, it would take, uh, you know, a lot of efforts and resources into that. But Insha Allah, we hope that with the help of, uh, the industry and the help of the experts and all the, uh, stakeholders, that Insha Allah, we can, uh, we can, uh, deliver on that, uh, shortly. Any, any other questions?
Uh, so far, there are no more questions.
Uh, I think we are within, uh, within the, the assigned time. Uh, we managed to complete, uh, the standard in two hours. Okay, uh, I would like to thank all our valued participants and, uh, colleagues, uh, experts for being part of this, uh, session. Again, I'll be back to you, uh, Hora, for, uh, concluding remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brother Majd, for the insightful presentation and the Q and A session. We would like to thank the Bahrain Association of Banks and UAE Banks Federation, all the participants and all our colleagues here in Ayufi. Insha Allah, we see you again in the future in other public hearings and other standards in both English and Arabic. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullah wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam.